I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ameranda.
Present.
Mrs. Logless.
Present.
Mr. Ferrioli.
Here.
Mr. Grable.
Here.
Mrs. Kennedy.
Present.
Mrs. Adams.
Present.
Mr. Nucchi.
Present.
Mrs. Donnelly.
Present.
Mrs. Manzi.
Present.
Mr. Middleman.
Present.
Mr. Garcia.
Present.
And Mrs. Warren.
Present.
At this time, I would be called accepting nominations for the Office of President of the Connect Quad Central School Board of Education. I'm going to go ahead and tell the filing. I trust you, Lee Kennedy, has nominated Mylan Logless. Any other nominations?
I have nominated Mr. Ameranda.
Trust me, Mr. Logless, Mr. Ferrioli, nominated for the District Director, Mylan Ameranda. Any other nominations? I will be doing the tri-oral poll. For the nomination of Mylan Logless, trustee Ameranda. Yes or no?
No.
Mrs. Logless?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrioli?
No.
Mr. Grable?
No.
Mrs. Kennedy?
Yes.
The nomination of Mr. Ameranda. Mr. Ameranda, yes or no?
Yes.
Stollis?
No.
Mr. Ferrioli?
Yes.
Mr. Grable?
Yes.
Mrs. Kennedy?
No.
Majority of the vote is three to two for Mr. Ameranda. Congratulations. Do you have a vote for this thing? You solemnly swear that you support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that you faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of School Board of Presidents according to the best of your ability.
Thank you.
At this time, I will now accept nominations for the Office of Vice President of the Connect Quad Central School Board of Education. Violet. Mrs. Kennedy.
I'd like to nominate Ferrioli.
Any other nominations? Okay, again, a real poll. For the nomination of Mylan Logless, Mr. Ameranda.
No.
Mr. Stollis?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrioli?
Yeah.
Mr. Grable?
No.
Mrs. Kennedy?
Yes.
For the nomination of Mr. Ferrioli? Mr. Ameranda?
Yes.
Mrs. Logless?
No.
Mr. Ferrioli?
Yes.
Mr. Grable?
Yes.
Mrs. Kennedy?
No.
There's already a vote for Mr. Ferrioli. Congratulations. So, Mr. Ameranda, you are now in charge. Actually, we're at School Board Ethics Policies Series 2160 and 0310. Would you just like me to read what it is?
Yes, please.
The Board of Education members will review the policies that are included below, which are 2160, School District Officer Employee Code of Ethics, E-1, School Board Member Ethics Credo, School Board Member Ethics Exhibit, Quetable, and School Board Member Ethics Regulation. And the next set is Policy Series 230, which is the evaluation of the board. And all of these policy forms are due into my office later than August 23rd. So you can have mine now. Thank you.
Yeah, change the meeting. I'd like to make a motion. Change.
What is the change?
The change is moving the public session to now. First, we just have to sit down. Okay, after the swearing-in, we hold the office for the deal.
Okay. First, we appointment of officers, and then we have to square. You don't care if the board is concerned with the board?
Yes.
The church? Okay.
All right.
We didn't know anything about it.
Yeah, we spoke about it just right before we started.
Oh, that was that.
Yeah.
A motion?
Yes, motion. Do the motion. Change the meeting.
Second?
Second.
You know, everyone, the body, you can ask to let everyone?
Looking for a second. Yes, we're gonna have public session first, so people can speak instead of having it last.
So you allow public now? The appointment of officers and the swearing-in of the superintendent.
Mr. Grable?
Superintendent officers? Do you want me to read it?
Please.
Motion says, dissolve that Board of Education appointee officers of the Connect Quad Central School District as enumerated. It would be Andrea Wilson, District Clerk, Christina Pizarrano, District Clerk, pro temp, Diana DeCicco, District Treasurer, Christine Stelling, Deputy Treasurer, Helen Longley, Claims Auditor, Tricia Abina, Claims Auditor, pro temp. Motion?
Motion. Second. Second set? Please. For favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. This time, we're going to square in the Superintendent of Schools. Do you, Linda Adams, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the State of New York, the Constitution of the United States, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Superintendent of Schools according to the best of your ability?
Very well.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We can do it privately, ladies.
Do you, Andrea Wilson, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of District Clerk and Clerk according to the best of your ability? Public comment.
Okay, we're gonna move to public comment. This section of the agenda gives the Board of Education an opportunity to recognize persons who wish to raise a question or to make a brief statement on matters including but not limited to agenda items. The time available will be limited to roughly three minutes for one or more topics. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and relate to school matters. Persons wishing to speak are asked to adhere to the following guidelines. Step to the podium. Address the board president only. You may address one or more topics in the time allotted. Individual employees, parents, or children should not be identified by name, title, position, grade, or building. The board has the final decision in determining the length of time, the appropriateness of the subject being presented, and the suitability of the time for such a presentation. All right? How is your time? Who would like to go first?
Mr. Police Joe.
Good evening. If you want to make a brief statement, first of all, congratulations on your election presidency and wish you luck.
Thank you, sir.
At the same time, I'd like to say thank you to the outgoing president. Been in this business long time. I know a thing or two about being president of the Board of Education. And I will have to give you the utmost credit. And I think over the past year, some difficult circumstances always nice for, in my opinion, great class.
Excuse me, we're having trouble hearing back here. Is there a microphone? Yeah, we have this air blower turned on.
All right, we'll make sure I get it there on.
Okay.
No, nothing. Leave that turned on.
It's very sensitive. Sorry?
Is anyone gonna come up and ask a question or speak?
Hi, my name is Scott Vaskin. I have no children in the district anymore. My girl just graduated. Thank you. I would like to discuss the outfit in the room, which is Bob Berger, right now, which I think some people here are.
Can I just stop you for one second?
Sure.
Actually, we can't match your names, so we'll just have to refer to him as the coaching baseball coach.
As the motion from this point forward. Let me preface this by saying I'm a football and hockey guy. I couldn't care less about baseball, but I do care about kids. And I don't know anything about coaching. I was asked to write a letter of recommendation, which in my, in my business environment, I do quite frequently, but I don't do it unless it's well deserved. I wrote one on behalf of Bob Berger. I know, I know him through teaching my children, who both had a great experience with them. I do not know him as a coach, but there was a rumor floating around that I was coerced into writing a letter of recommendation on his behalf. Some of you know me, some of you don't. I am not one that gets coerced into writing anything. So I stand behind my letter of recommendation on his character. I think he's a solid family man. I think he's a great teacher. I don't know anything about coaching. And I would hate to see him lose any kind of status in the coaching for just asking me to write a recommendation for him. Okay?
Thank you, Scott.
Hi, Nigel.
Hey. Name was supposed to be.
You said coach.
Yeah, I'm an amazing coach as well. I especially for the second. I actually have had him as a coach, and I've had him as a teacher this year. Now, he coached football for me when I was in seventh grade. And he was just, he was kind to everyone. He was helpful to everyone. He was just hilarious, especially middle school football. I had teachers that would be having a whole crack at that, and they were like, "What?" Have. And, yeah, he really, he was an amazing coach, and he did extremely well in that five-one-three type of season. And he was an amazing part of that. And I was lucky to have him as a teacher in the building this past year. And same thing as he had on the field. Extremely helpful, extremely kind, hilarious. And he really puts everything into his students.
You would have been a real athlete.
I was in like a, I was in Japan. The thing, the connections he's had with your children fully, I just don't see. And, you know, really getting these children, a lot of, you know, to come out of their shell, which is amazing to hear, especially in a school like you. People have a conversation, but, yeah, there's no music, it's silent, and then you start small conversation. It's really just crazy, you don't see a lot, especially now. And I just, I will thank anyone who was an amazing person for this position. And just, what's so important in this position?
Thank you for coming.
Hi. Last night, the RCA held a community informational meeting, the Hop Hop Windwatch Home Owners Association, and various officials along with residents of, of and surrounding Islandia. We invited the entire board, along with the administration, to attend, as we felt this would be important to the recently started coalition. The casino is proposing to be built in Islandia at the Marriott Hotel, which is diagonal from Mid-Suffolk Pediatrics, where many of us bring our children. The casino will be open 20 hours a day and is legal for 18-year-olds. We all did hear that. Legal for 18-year-olds, or all seniors, it's legal for. Why is this important to the district? Well, casinos in the areas surrounding them are affected by many things. An increase in drugs, which is what I thought the coalition was for. An increase in prostitution, the hotel. Lowering property values within a 10-mile radius. I brought the map, and that encompasses the entire Connect Quad District. And sometimes even larger. Casinos such as this with BLTs are called casino crack. It's addictive, and as we all know, addictive behavior destroys family and leads to debt, bankruptcies, broken families, and higher crime rates. I'm gonna say this again. It lowers home values, which will decrease the good standing of our school district. I'll also mention that OTB is in debt over $30 million and is borrowing more from Delaware North to install this casino, casino, in our neighboring town. We, the taxpayers, will be responsible for paying the increased taxes to support this bankrupt, this bankrupt company before it starts its casino. So my question is, where were all you guys last night? Our administration, our board trustees, why aren't you speaking up for our community and our children? Hop Hop Board of Ed President wrote a big, long letter against the casino. I want to know where we stand on that. Disappointed in our lack of, in your lack of concern for our entire community. I have several other questions on the Google document that have not been answered. And according to your credo, that's in tonight's agenda, these are to be in writing, and they're in writing. So I'd appreciate those answers. Also, Lisa Kennedy cannot be here, and she asked that I bring up again, she spoke to you guys last meeting about the regions. And either lowering of the average, lowering the percentages that we use towards the total child's average, or making a separate test, and she has not got an answer for that. She would like to know about that as well. I'm also gonna weigh in really fast. I have 30 seconds. Mr. Berger?
Take your time.
Thanks. With the cheerleaders, I have no dog in this, this show. I have nothing to do with it. I have no sports. It has nothing to do with it. Last meeting, a couple meetings ago, you had the cheerleaders and a teacher running that position, and those cheerleading coaches were told that they can no longer have that position. I think that you need to be consistent and follow that policy. And the teacher, that is the current teacher, needs to have that position. That's the policy. That's what you have to call them. That's all. It's his name. Right on time. I know where we're at.
You know where I was. But you, but you say, and you are stable. You're concerned, the lack of concern that we have.
Yes, you were all invited.
You don't know where we were. You don't know what, how it gets you to be at it.
Not one, not one person from this entire board or administration showed up. Not one of you.
You say the lack of concern that we have. I think, I think everyone sitting up here has 100% concern for this community.
Oh, I'll, this is great background.
And that's why we're doing this job. Yes, I was told that that, that meeting was canceled.
The meeting, but the, the town meeting was canceled. There was a Hop Hop meeting, and the homeowners association meeting was not.
He got the information, that, the, I'm just talking to the information I need.
Bruce said you have the letter, the presidency said you have the letter. Did you contact him? Because he would have told you that it wasn't canceled.
No, I did not contact him. I got notification from the person that I spoke to, told me that the meeting was canceled. That's all.
The meeting for the town was canceled, right?
Oh, this is, there's only gonna be one public portion tonight?
Yes. Only one public portion.
Ladies and gentlemen, congratulations. I'd like to speak to the head coach. I've known the coach for over 30 years. I grew up with him.
That was a great process.
He's an outstanding person. He's always been in sports. His family's always been in sports. He grew up in Connect Quad. He played many things. He's always loved the community. He's always loved children. It's two of his own. I think that it's a travesty to possibly let him go. I think he is great for the children. He promotes teamwork. He is set up, from what I've understood from over the years. He's looked out for his children, as far as I'm concerned, their children. Because his children, because he's coached them. And I grew up in the football community. Played football for Connect Quad. Graduated '92. He's set up fundraisers for children that have passed on through the years and stuff like that. He's helped out people that have passed, you know, gone on into their former, you know, their future lives and stuff like that. And I just feel that he's a great asset to Connect Quad and to the children to be able to pass on something that he grew on, on to, and to keep a traditional life. Thank you. Martin Forsen.
Well, everyone, let me just state that. No one has to say their name, but if you, yes, if you would be willing to. I think it's nice just so we know who's coming, who's speaking, where you're from. You don't have to. Yep, you don't have to. You don't have to. Yes. Thank you. Thanks for coming out today.
Hi, Liz Morris. I hope I probably give my name.
That's what I mean. How you say, hello, Liz. How are you?
I'm speaking on behalf of the coach as well. I don't know baseball. All I know is what I see. I'm a parent of six kids that went through Connect Quad, including nieces and nephews, as well as I have 30 years of teaching experience. I also chapter on the games, so I see a lot of different coaches out there. I've seen a lot of different teachers through the years as colleagues and as well as teachers of my students. I came here tonight on behalf of the coach because I really feel he deserves the position. He motivates the students. He's positive on the field. He's good with the kids. He's got the experience, and I'm just saying, as a parent, as a colleague, as a teacher, that it really would be a travesty if he does not get the position.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dawn Banza. I was up at the podium on the last meeting defending the cheerleading coach that I feel was done in injustice in this district. And today, I'm here on the other side of that. We need to stop being politicians and, you know, we have these contracts that I made. And it's not fair. We're humans. We need to unite. Look at the world, what's going on around us. You want us to come together? I was raised in this district. I work in the district. I, you know, my kids are in the district. My heart is in the district. Mr. Berger's heart is in that baseball. You took it away from the cheerleading coach. Now let's just take it away. If he can teach in our district all he hears, and he can be part of coaching. Now you want to say he's not good enough for a position he's earned and is well deserved. Where is your heart? Is your heart in our community? Or is it selfishness? Is it, you know, what is it?
But you're saying that we made that decision.
But you told, you told the coach that, that a teacher deserves a position.
There has been no appointment at this moment, and there is not gonna be one tonight. We are, we're listening to you. We're listening to everybody.
It shouldn't even be a question. Bring it back.
We tried.
You guys know me from last year, I guess. Mark Bush. How you all doing?
Good, how are you?
I was in a similar situation last year. I had a tough time coming here. I really didn't know what to do if I wanted to. But I thought about what happened to me last year, and if I didn't have people come and support me, I probably would have lost my coaching position. And there was stuff said about me that I didn't get a chance to speak and say how I felt about. And it was kind of disrespectful and hurt, and it just wasn't right. And I just feel like what she said before, the unity, if you have rules, stick with rules. I don't care who does what, but just be consistent. Consistent. Just this character, you know, I've coached him back a few years ago. And he's good with the kids. It's fine. My kid played for him this year. My kid loved him. Most of the kids from over my house, most of them, all of them really liked him a lot. It's really not too bad to say that. Listen, does everybody have skeletons in the back closet? Everybody do. Everybody here, you can drag out skeletons for anybody. Are you looking for something? To do something to hurt somebody? Or you're trying to do what is best for us and the kids here? You almost took my job away from me. No, but you almost, no, no, listen.
Okay, but hold on a second. Relax. We didn't do anything. We reviewed the situation, and we pointed a coach. End of story there.
But, but hold on. My name shouldn't have been brought up. For 15 years, I coached the district without one point against.
Because it is, we have to review everything. That's what we're doing here.
Okay.
I'm gonna stay focused. I have to get excited. That's all I'm saying.
You know what? What are we about here? Doing the right thing to the kids. That's all I hope that you guys can give for. Alls I care about is the kids. Why, coach, you care less about the parents. Parents make it tougher. The kids, they're the ones that have problems. They're afraid to talk. They're afraid to talk to their own parents. I could only tell you some of the stories I sit down and talk to the kids about. And the fact that I was questioned about my integrity and what I meant, it hurt. And now, people are being questioned, and I just don't feel, you guys all get to it well enough to really get to really what's going on here. I don't care who coaches football. I don't care who coaches baseball. But if you have somebody that's willing to coach and cares and has a heart, the guy has a heart. I've been around, I went through some tough times, and you understand. You're not thinking about what you're doing, what kind of example you guys are setting for us. What you're doing and what people are, you're setting the example for what goes on here. I had no clue about politics until last year. Man, I'll tell you what, this is mind-boggling. This is like strange. I went to bed crying last year, a couple nights, crying over what was going on. Tears, and I couldn't sleep. And I know the time's up. No problem. If you want me to stop, that's fine.
Can I just say, I'll thank you and everybody here to take the time to come out and speak, because what we get are nasty letters. Maybe I'm on the wrong side. I'm not gonna say anything about this, other than, but to come out, take your time in the summer. You could be a local or something else. I respect you for that. Thank you for coming.
Wherever it is going to kill us, anybody goes to, it shouldn't be taken away. Because something shouldn't be taken away. That's all I feel.
Thanks, Mark.
Hi, Jenny Petty. That's what I. I wasn't to speak tonight, because I know my, it was very important. My son's come tonight to speak. Of course, this race, as, as a mother of five, we played, we played and will still play every sport and activity that this district offers. We have tried baseball, so of course I'm taking him. But I will say that I just wanted to speak as a parent of a child who did happen to have this coach as a teacher and a coach. My son, um, played football for many years. And I'm taking a break for a little bit when he wasn't sure if he wanted to continue on. When junior high came along, he said, you know, mom, what are you doing? I was like, Mrs. Douglas, whatever you want to do, I'll be in every game. Well, I can't even begin to tell you how much his love of football, he had a hundredfold. Every single practice, I believe we did that sometimes we'd go early and just watch and I'd say, honey, boy, I would tell the boys, there's no way I would prepare for this stuff. But those kids came on the field every single time. They were happy, they were excited. Whoever was in the garage, wife, mom, as anyone who knows, you're not driving to show, they're home to drive. Anybody to grab up and take home to help each other out. The kids always had funny stories. They were always happy. They were always happy to do anything for the coaches because they knew they had made the field a mess. They were respectful. I've been to all those games and the parents, from what I had seen, were very respectful also. Because I think that respect is something that you are, and I think you can walk into a room and respect without a word. And I think that this particular person has that ability because of the type of person they are. My son also had the opportunities of being a teacher. And as a parent, I'm thrilled. I'm so excited because I think they're a fantastic year because he engages them on top of children. He genuinely takes the time to discuss things with the children without giving a personal opinion about his slants. And so sometimes it's a tough thing to teach because, you know, it's hard not to feel, you know, passionate one way or another, especially with so much unrest going on. But I will say he incited a lot of great conversations to the children. He really made them think. And I don't know any child who had him, and I believe we, we know a lot of kids with all the ones we have, not one child had anything to say about this particular coach. And honestly, I just want, working as the job, I don't know, and I don't know anything about the politics of it. I don't know anything about the rules we have, nor will I pretend to. But as a person, I just think he's an A-plus person. And as a parent, that has been my personal experience. And to see my child spend time with another adult, and it's a long time that person's with my child, you know, season, every single day. And to see my big performance side every time, never negative, never negative, never nothing, couldn't wait to go. Do you want to disappoint that person because they respected that for that long? I just think that that's my recognition. For whatever job he's going for, whether it was the coaching job, it is whatever, or he was going for anything else, I would say he's just an A-plus individual. And I really hope that the district does the right thing and considers whoever is the best.
Thank you.
I can use that as, uh, when I heard where he was going all the time, uh, to say that was just what he's not just giving. I had the original, uh, go with Rob for over 30 years and I was going to Connect Quad and playing baseball, uh, JV and varsity. I saw the passion. I saw the passion in his players' eyes of coaches and players that were in feelings exchanging between player and coach. My part in his play. Whether he knew I was at those games and he knew I was at some of those games, you could just feel the exchange. As a former player, those exchanges are a real place. We were all former students. Those relationships between teacher and students, they're also a real place. When I found out when he was doing, he was going to teach, I knew that he was going to excel in it, no matter what he was going to do. And then when he was going to the coaching, same thing. Rob has always been a family man and a teacher man. And I believe in my heart of hearts and what everybody else is in this world. If he doesn't think, given the decision and the opportunity and honor to continue to teach the young men, running the new future for the foreseeable future. I think it's just a strength and I guess everywhere it doesn't mean that opportunity. But you're talking about a young man that's going to have a huge impact on the district, the district. Teaching young men, which I believe in.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tara Bean. And I'll say a few words on behalf of my colleague who's on the coaching position. Um, I worked with Shannon since 2001 and all that time I've come to appreciate him not only as an educator, but as friends. If you ask any student who went through, um, our single school, who inspired you most, um, who are the students who mentioned? And one of the things is that, um, they may not have had him as a teacher, even if it was a coach or just passing the ball by yourself. He's inspired them all. In the classroom, um, he exercises highly great timing. He knows when to slow down his instruction or change his approach to the lesson to make sure that every student understands. He built weight and chips for the students. He finds ways to motivate and engage them in any way that will make them, um, understand and they respect the law. When the school day is over, the coach puts a baseball cap on and there is no difference in the way he acts. The coach finds a way to motivate and engage all his players. He teaches and instills in every member that is team and it is a team to make a baseball game play. If anyone speaks to any of the coaches as members, they will without a doubt, um, say how we inspired them to be a better player and a better person. The coach not only teaches on the game, but gives them a lesson in life. This is my opinion as a world-class coach. And I don't understand how he could ever be in my disposition. It has occurred from both student, parents and other colleagues. He is just one amazing person and I think he could be an asset to the coaching position in baseball. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Welcome. A lot of discussion has been about how this coach is a wonderful person. And I can attest to that after teaching in this hallway with him. I love him and respect him like I do many of my colleagues. He was also the teacher of my son. I can say all the same things that these people have said, that the other people said to students, parents, colleagues. But now that we've changed the focus of the discussion and bring it to you, I'm amazed that there's, that we even have to come here to, to, for this situation. I think you need to focus on the facts. I've heard a lot of ugly things being said. I've heard that there's been all this turmoil. And I don't understand. You have to look at the facts. This man's been coaching for what, 19 years? Am I right? 19, something of that nature?
Yes.
What is the issue? What is the problem? And this is. And as a teacher, I know that there's sometimes disrespect for people who've been in a situation for a long time, but I don't think that's the issue here. And I think all of you need to put aside your emotions, your feelings, and just look at the facts and do the right thing. This is the first thing you're gonna do as the new board, one of the first things you're going to do with the new board. And it's going to say a lot about you and what your decision is. And I think you need to think about it and really, really do the best thing. That's it.
I just have a question. Is there written criteria for appointing a coach?
It's a very qualification.
Is there a procedure that you guys find? I know when you hire a teacher, there's, there's a set of prerequisites and so, so there's no written. I would challenge this board that after this debacle, you guys put it in place so you can eliminate all of these issues and the debts on how coaches is appointed or, or removed. Because obviously you can't, you don't need to have the procedure other than, I guess, you know, priorities for removing a coach. So that's all I can say. Thanks. Would anyone else like to speak?
Could anyone, could everyone just get up and say their name out of respect in this way? That'll, if you all have an itinerary of who's here in favor of, of what's going on here.
Favor of what's going on?
Was it favor of what's going on or favor of a person in support of a person?
No.
We're not in favor of what's going on. I would love if you all got up for two minutes and said. You know who we are.
They have a chance to get up right now, they must be. Would anyone else like to speak? Going once, going twice?
Wait, can I just, when, when the last, um, question was, what is the, um, what's the?
Qualifications.
Isn't it, um, has to be an employee that's your first and then coaching experience is the second, right?
No, no, no. That's not qualifications.
No, isn't that?
Anyone can apply for a job.
As far as the requirements for a job.
Well, that's, that's.
Yeah, it's a qualification. Right? As far as the teacher gets it versus the outside first. Thank you. Feel free to go stand.
Any other comments?
Everyone.
All right.
What do you guys need?
We're gonna take a quick recess. If anyone, you know, people want to leave, just a quick, two minutes, two, three minutes. Motion, motion, make a motion. All favor? All favor.
No, I left the old one and remade it. Okay. All right, because I didn't go on. Because I didn't. It's the same way. I just remade it so that I could. All right, I didn't look, I'm sorry.
How are you?
I'm trying.
Okay, so you're gonna, you're gonna make good sit-ups tomorrow?
Yes, you can be there.
He asked me to be there.
Yes, thank you.
So you can talk to us.
Because I would love to have some pictures of what the bond, what some things that are happening with the bond this summer. The O B M S tennis courts are already, they are already built, so.
You let me, yeah, you know, put together, that's the other thing. We have to decide who's gonna do what.
That's why I want to be with them with you.
Then when I cover something, do I send it then to write it off?
They're gonna write the copy.
Okay, that's what we have to work out.
Yes. And that's why I think it's great that you could be there. You're on the agenda tonight, you know that, right?
No, that's a good effect. Oh, I mean.
You're pointing you to.
Oh, okay. No, no, it's just that piece of paper. It's a piece of paper because it's a part of it with the paint and it would be destroyed. It would have to be included.
Sorry, Mr. Lee?
That's it, it's absurd. So we'll do that. We found six rooms like that. Next thing. Yeah, yup, it's a paper problem. Yup. Yeah, they are definitely, so we do have some areas to like, uh, sort of like blocking that you're, you know, you have a choice. We've got it after this, not in dollars. They have some of the, I think, 15, 16, 17. And it's amazing that I've got six years. Some of them are still, those are people that, that, that. Yes. So I'll, I'll see you again.
That sounds great. So it's here at my service.
Our kids? So other ones get. Same thing, all you can do is check the test at the door. You can't, you can't check. Everything else outside the door is closed. For some. Because you use salt. Exactly. Anything else that you, those are the most. Exactly. So it's, uh, it wasn't. You know, but if there was something, what I have to do. Maybe we can get a few words out of it. Or five, you should probably. Exactly. It's gonna, you gotta keep an eye on all these.
Who's in there? What else? Do you see Mr. Middle? Hi, Mr. Middle.
You know, I'm going to be so.
Both, both fields will be. They shouldn't be pushing it.
Is that how it's looking?
I remember it's. They were. Change the rule. The one, the double. The one, the double, the big place.
All right, you ready? Everyone ready? All right, we're ready. Chirri Zoo. Mr. Garcia, are you ready? All right, everyone's all ready, we're ready. Ms. Kennedy, we're ready. Connect Board of Education meeting is now convened, reconvened. All right. We're going to approve the minutes. First, number one, minutes of June fourteenth, two thousand sixteen, business meeting, public hearing. Do I have a motion to approve? We got a motion, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number two, the minutes of June twentieth, two thousand sixteen, special meeting. Okay, the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number three, the minutes of June twenty eighth, two thousand sixteen, special meeting. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Adams is going to go next. You ready, Ms. Adams?
I am so ready.
All right, we've been waiting.
No kid. Right here. Have to watch the also. No kid.
So I'm, I'm going to embarrass the next person, 'cause I'm gonna ask her to join. I wanna be right in the middle of both videotapes. Make sure you get the good side of Sharon. Okay, perfect, so then I'll let you hear it by yourself. So at our last public board meeting, we awarded tenure to all of our teachers who had been in the district for three years. And we did vote on this young lady standing next to me, but she wasn't there. So we wanted to do something special for her and just recognize the work that she does, because the, the amount of hours that Sharon spends here, um, should be illegal, how many hours she spends here. I think they might be, yeah, that's definitely slave labor. So, Mrs. Donnelly began, began her career at Connectwood as the district treasurer. She quickly became the right hand of O B S and superintendent of business operations and the superintendent. Sometimes when you apply for a job inside the place you have worked, you're overlooked, because there always seems to be someone better for the job from outside of the district. Thank goodness the Board of Education did not overlook Mrs. Donnelly. She is a tireless crusader for the Connectwood School District. Her work ethic and her strong commitment to fiscal responsibility, while maintaining the best program for our students, is always her balancing act. Unlike most business officials, Mrs. Donnelly knows that students are our bottom line, not the dollar signs. That too, but students are wonderful. It is wonderful to work with someone like this. Anyone will tell you, if you want something done, you give it to the busiest person. That's true of Mrs. Donnelly. Connectwood is her second home. Actually, I think she spends more time here than at her real home. It's hard to convince her to go home at night, never mind to take a vacation. Mrs. Donnelly is a wife, mother of four daughters, each more successful than the last. One of her daughters is nutritionist, one a E N L teacher, one a sophomore in college, and one a sophomore in high school. She has guided them toward personal accomplishment, even as she mothers all of us here toward continued success. She's an accomplished guitar player, and even leads sing-alongs during our holiday luncheon. She is the glue that holds the business department together. She is one of those unique individuals that once you find, you try desperately to keep a hold of, because she's irreplaceable. At the last board meeting, you were letting vote on her on tenure. Thank you so much for allowing her to continue to work with us to be Connectwood great.
Can we see that one? There you go.
Did you get two?
Name is on, yes. Well, it's either. It's a couple of people on that side. No, two, no, two.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much.
I already gave you my two, too.
Yes, there you go.
Thank you. All right. Okay. All right, moving on to reorganization items, we need approval. I have a motion for items two through forty-nine.
Motion.
We get a second?
Second.
Okay. Yes. Yeah, we have to go to items eighteen to nineteen. Okay, is everyone there? Okay, these are the Board of Education Standing Committees. We have the Audit Committee, Grounds, Health and Safety, Policy, and Technology.
I'll take Health and Safety.
I'll take, uh, Policy.
I'll take Policy.
Sorry, wait, wait, wait.
One at a time, we gotta, yeah, do, pick one, and then we'll go down the line, so everyone has a choice. So Mylin, what do you want?
I'll take Policy.
All right, so Mylin.
Ling wants Policy.
And Nick?
Okay, Nick? Nick wants Policy? Okay, wait, 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 so My, all right, Rob, what would you like? Skip? Uh, I'll be around. Grounds. Ms. Kennedy, what would you like?
I asked for Policy earlier.
What was that for? You got Mylin, you got Nick?
I was first when I asked for it.
I was second.
There you go, all right, Lee, I'm gonna make you alternate for Policy.
There are two people on Policy.
Yes, Mylin and Nick.
Okay.
All right, you'll be alternate?
There's no reason you have two. I'll leave the alternate.
Okay. All right, so let's go, uh, anyone?
Does anybody else want grounds?
Anyone else want grounds? Okay, I'll take it.
I'll take Health and Safety.
Okay, Nick, anything else?
Where are you showing?
Technology.
Okay, Nick is going Technology. We have an opening for Health and Safety and Technology.
I'll do tech.
Okay. Lee, do you want Health and Safety?
No.
All right, I'll do Health and Safety. All righty. We have to, uh.
Well, it'll be Nick.
Okay, let's go to nineteen. This is the Citizen Advisory Committees. We have the Task Force and the Steering. We'll start with, let's go, Nick. Okay, Rob? Just going down the line, Rob?
Uh, I'll do task.
Okay. Ms. Ogles?
I can't commit to either one, because I'm not sure of the dates.
Okay, Ms. Kennedy?
I'll do Steering.
So, I'll do. Task Force, what day was that on, anyone remember?
Monday.
Monday, so is Steering.
I had a kind of a conflict on Monday.
You just, for that, that's a Citizens Advisory Committee, so we just can't have more than two, but we don't need to have any board members, but the fact that we have one board member is good to have that.
Okay.
It's just that, that's just to make sure that no, we don't ever have a forum at that.
All right, so I'll, I'll be alternate.
Okay.
I'll be alternate, alternate for both.
Okay.
Okay, any questions? No, all right, we get? Do we have a question on the motion?
Yes, I got, I do. I would like to call.
I can't hear you, Lee.
I would like to pull the internal order, uh, what's the name of the internal order?
Serenius.
Yeah, I'd like to pull that, uh, and have the name before any decision on them.
What number, Lee?
That is number twenty-nine. I thought, you know, a couple of years ago, that, you know, I questioned them doing it for X amount of years, because sometimes we should change. And on Dr. Smith, we went through an R F P.
Right, we did at that time. And still summers was period.
I discussed it, well, maybe there's some things that I, I think the issue was found, and I wanted to really spoke to them, why, you know, you made one mistake, that's okay, it's a mistake. You make two, it's not a mistake anymore, it's, you're not doing your job, you make three, you really should not be.
If they're coming at the next meeting to do a presentation.
So I, I really don't think we should approve them at this point.
They'll be presenting their less recorded at that time.
So I think before we approve them, we should find out why they did what they did, to overlook what they did, uh, and to have our other board member find it. So I really think that we should discuss it with them before we would make a commitment, because we're dealing with one in here.
I'll go back.
We allowed them?
You're gonna take the top, Sharon?
We allowed them?
What was overlooked?
Having a tough time following the same, so they won't, he'll be speaking up, but if, if what you're talking about is, uh, you have an obdysmo motion, and if you, if one board member doesn't come to vote in the affirmative as to every single item, that item must be pulled for a separate vote.
Correct. Wasn't it called for some?
That's correct.
Last, I mean, I probably should be sure of that process. Well, it should be pulled, it should be pulled.
No, it, uh.
We took a vote on it, wants to pull it, we didn't take a vote on it to pull it. All right, so it must be one by.
I think it's irrelevant, if we're gonna pull it and take it for a separate vote.
Simply, so that everybody knows the rule.
No, I just wanted to know what was the cause.
You, you, you cannot, it's a Robert's Rules item, not a legal item, but you cannot force a board member to vote on a particular subdivision by making an obdysmo.
Okay, so do we vote on that right now?
Oh, you just pull it, automatically pull, and you, and you vote on the balance, and then you have a separate motion on that.
All right, so we pulled it?
I still have, I still have a question on the other item.
All right, you can turn them off.
Turn them off.
Just talk louder.
All right, question?
I have a question in regard, I believe this would be for you, Sharon, um, the authorization of school lunch prices, now it's increasing.
Okay, I don't have the, but can we go back to the original question, because I don't think that was ever answered before we went on to a new topic?
What was the question?
Can we even?
He said we can pull it, it's a matter of decision.
Are we allowed to not, it's part of the process for?
Are we allowed to not vote on it tonight, we have way too more weeks.
Sure, it was approved in the.
Can we wait till we meet? If the board sets up. You are, you're talking about your internal order?
Yes.
You are not obligated to make that appointment tonight, but you are obligated to have an internal order, so you can't be put up forever.
Right, exactly, that's my.
And you wanna know we're bound by the process that we go to find our thing?
Correct. I didn't, I didn't hear that.
Are we bound by the fact that we awarded the R F P to them a couple of years ago, extending out a number of years that includes this year?
All these professional jobs are subject to termination on many days.
Okay.
Thank you.
It includes me, although I shouldn't be telling you.
Get a conclusion. We're gonna pull it and talk.
We'll pull animals out.
Okay, I just wanted to get.
Mylin, your question?
Uh, this, this question would be for you, Sharon, I understand that the prices on the lunch are going up about ten cents.
Yes, they are.
Now, I'm assuming that two fifty-five is on the elementary level, and the two eighty is on the secondary level.
Oh, yes, that's correct.
Um, for, so you're increasing it that, uh, only a few pennies over the, the elementary level.
Can you speak up, Mylin?
But have you seen the portion sizes of the high school kids, so you're increasing it, but you're still giving the same portion as an elementary kid?
We owe that toll in points with the public kid act.
So I'm gonna pay more for the same lunch that elementaries are getting.
Yes, and there's a, there's a two more, a price lunch, actually two that I have to run through the calculation of, also sent down by the state. And we actually, according to the calculation, had raised it more, but there's a ten cent cap. And that calculation makes that the difference between how much we charge for a paid lunch, and how much our reimbursement is. So you have to have, um, a spread that justifies the reimbursement that you're getting.
So, but I don't think it's fair that the, the kids on the secondary level have to pay, you know, say a quarter more for the same entree, which is not even enough for the high school kids, that has to go up a second time for a lunch, so now you're gonna ask him, obviously in my point of mind, frustration at you, but, uh, I don't see how this is fair.
I understand your point, traditionally all school districts, the secondary lunch is higher. Um, I looked at several local school districts, they all have a difference.
For the same portion size? Doesn't sound fair.
Wait, doesn't that, because I have a larger portion, I don't.
They don't, it's a caloric range. And the elementary caloric range is less than the high school caloric. So if, uh, so if you're giving the elementary kid for, this is what I'm hearing, that the elementary level is getting four, I don't know the exact count, say four chicken nuggets, well, the high school kids are getting four chicken nuggets, so the caloric intake, I would say even down there, so what is the difference?
I think that's a good question. Yeah, because I think that's a good question. If we get a better answer, I don't know, I hear you were saying, you know, it's right.
We have a different socks.
Yeah.
It's a different caloric range.
Possible.
Then can we be specific, Miss Adams, saying what the difference is, are they getting an extra or something?
We'll get, I'll get it from the food service, I'm pretty worried.
Because I, I know that lunch ladies have said to me, it's the same exact portion size as the elementary and the high school. So these lunch ladies are not giving me facts, and you're saying that they're not giving me factual information, I'd like to know, what is the factual information? Yeah, no, I just, like I said, I don't think it's fair, I mean, my kids, I think their lunch, it doesn't affect me, it's, it's the same, it's the same. Right, so I have an issue with that.
So it's twenty-four stable?
I would have to read.
Vote, so we'll have to pull it. Pulling number twenty-four.
Number twenty-four also.
Okay, separate vote?
Yes.
Or we're just pulling it?
We're just pulling it, because it's not a vote, she needs to come back and give you more information. So can we table that, Sharon? I like to, I like to table it.
All right.
It's pulled, Robert's Rules is tricky stuff, not law, but let's, let's focus on this. You're gonna, you're now pulling it for a separate vote, and you're gonna need a separate motion. If you, if nobody makes a motion, it's simply not on the floor.
All right, so I'm making a motion to pull it.
Then they can be a thing.
All right, so I'm making a motion to pull it.
Just asking for it to be pulled, it's pulled.
Making a motion to table it.
Later, yeah.
All right, I have a question on number twenty-five. So, Mr. Mercio, why do you think we should keep you as an appointment?
I don't think you have enough time for me to make that presentation.
I wasn't looking for you, I was just busting your chops.
I just wanna thank you and tell you how much I appreciate it. I think it's our seventeenth year here, uh, and they will be very interesting.
Okay, what is your eighteen?
Eighteen.
I don't have any other questions.
All right, any other questions? Okay. Yeah, we're voting on two through forty-nine, minus twenty-nine, and twenty-four. All right.
Aye.
Aye, Mylin?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes. All in favor?
I said that.
Now, we have some votes on item twenty-nine.
Your motion on?
On item twenty-nine.
Okay.
Your motion to?
Motion to table item twenty-nine.
Motion, yes, second.
Would I make the motion?
I made, I made the motion, in second. Okay, Lee?
Yeah, I'm second.
Looking for a vote, now we have a vote.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, aye. Okay.
Twenty-four, motion two. I'm gonna put in a motion table.
That's the authorization of school lunch prices. The motion.
I'm making a motion.
All right, Mylin, motion to table. Do we get a second?
Okay.
Okay, Lee, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Move on to policy. Okay. Policy. Approve, we have to approve the second reading? Yes, please.
Second reading, policy is presented, as enumerated. Zero one one five harassment is involving a division, fifty-one hundred attendance, fifty-three hundred conduct, fifty-four oh five wellness and nutrition, sixty-nine hundred disposal of district inventory, eight one thirty school, school safety plans and teams.
Motion?
Second.
No, no, I'm asking for a motion.
No motion, alright. Make a motion, second?
Second.
Mr. Grable? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we have the abolishment of the second reading.
It's policy eight one three oh, which is planned as superseded by...
Motion, can I have a, alright, we have a motion, second, second. All in favor? Aye. Alright, we're moving to consent agenda. I need a motion for items two through thirty-two. Alright, we're gonna have a discussion on items number two, number three, and number four. Number two is the NISBA board member mandated training, I believe for Mr. Grable?
Yes.
We need a motion? Any questions about that?
Yeah, you have to do it.
Yeah, Mr. Grable, you have any questions?
No, I can't wait to do it.
Learn as much as you can.
I will.
Thank you. Motion?
That's going to the sense, so it's fine.
Alright, number three, NISBA annual convention. This year it's being held in Buffalo.
I am not attending.
I am not attending. Mylan says no? Lee says no, Mr. Grable?
No.
So do we have the vote, can we just not send anybody? The three people are not, the three people are not going.
You have points.
Two better know.
Yeah.
Good. Yeah, I think it's important to send at least one person. So what is the twelve number that can attend?
Three, we have enough funds for three.
Three, only three. When is it? Do we have a date? Where is it?
Twenty-seven through the twenty-ninth, October.
October, when?
Twenty-seven through the twenty-ninth.
Probably the first two games of the World Series. So then I have a telegraph.
So right now? Someone else wants to go later?
I would like to go to the next one. I can go last year.
Alright. Alright, number four, the scope annual meeting.
I'll go.
I will go. Lee?
Yep.
Gray?
Anybody else?
Anyone else?
I would, I would like to be a favor on that day, so.
Mylan?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah, I'll go.
Alright. Mylan, Lee, and Gray. Are there any questions? Alright. All in favor? Aye. Aye? Alright. You know when you're ready. Okay, Mylan?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all good. Now we move on to recommended action personnel matters. Motion for schedule one, resignations, terminations, leave of absence.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion for schedule two, appointments, tenure, salary changes. Nick made a motion. Second? Any questions?
Long-term stuff? How long?
Uh, it depends on the...
Wait about five weeks?
No, it's gotta be more than six.
More than six weeks, can't believe you get the paper. You should tell us, they're old.
I brought in six weeks.
But you, you, we don't need all that information once again.
No, it was just a top raise you asked.
Just the top raise, that was a little bad.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I stop for a second?
Yes.
I'm gonna ask Mrs. Fanning to introduce someone who's in the audience then. We are very excited to have Heather Levine join us as our new CPSC CSE chair. She'll be starting... Congratulations. Thank you, guys, thank you.
We're moving on to financial matters, items two through six. Motion? Need a motion? Second motion, second?
Second.
Rob seconded. Any questions?
We have people, we have overtime report chair, for sure. We have overtime as compared to last year, a half percent off overall. We've had some big increases in technology with all the installs of the smart boards, and duplicating, we're preparing materials, HR with some training, business office with a position that has been vacant for a long time. Overtime in the computer department for various reasons, upgrades to software and the like, as well as a conversion to new software. And in guidance, there's been some PPS that's been a big drop in overtime. But overall, we're a half percent above last year. Despite all that technology overtime, so it's pretty good. I anticipate a lot more this time. So we're rolling out a new bond, bond warrant.
Well, not the technology overtime. We don't anticipate having custodial overtime per se.
No, no. We have, we have staff that's working two shifts at the high school, both middle schools and Cherokee. And when it comes time for the contractors to do afternoon work, we're gonna steer to those buildings first to keep that at the lowest level possible. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We need to go back into executive, correct? Yes. Okay, motion to close?
Motion.
Second? Second? Okay. Yes. Motion to move into, for the Board of Education to move into executive session in accordance with open meetings law. Section one oh five F, employment history of a particular person, confidential, and exempt under OML to discuss a disciplinary matter involving a particular student and to seek legal advice from the board's attorney. Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight.
I did just get my phone last week because the old phone was on the fritz.